Well, scare everybody.
Good morning and welcome to the August 25th, 2022 meeting for the Dixon County Commission. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute?
My allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America's one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On our agenda, we have three items that we're going to add today. The first one is in regards to rescinding a resolution as a housekeeping item. The second item is in regards to the EMT paramedic classification and pay schedule. The third item is in regards to a new voting machine. And so those three items we would add to the agenda. I would move that we approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The consent agenda includes the minutes of the August 18th meeting, also the recount canvas expenditures of $182,651.86. SD security, it was a wire payment of $4,200. And then also hand checks and the amount was $2,459.05.
I'm moving to approve the consent agenda.
We have the motion and the second for approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Commission comment, Ron. I don't have anything today. Okay, Craig?
Yeah, yesterday evening I went over to the senior center in Barrett County. attended a seminar on bank fence law. There was probably approximately 200 people in attendance. And then there was probably another 350 online that viewed it that way. Gentleman did an excellent job. Did find out one thing that I think we were all mistaken about is that it's non.
Let's see. Can't appeal it?
Yep, can't appeal it. And I always thought it was if the commission was a 3-0 vote or 2-1 vote, it wouldn't make any difference. But the only way it can be non-appiable is only two commissioners approve it. If it's three and you vote all three for it, it's appealable. Yeah.
So typically if we have a fence viewings, it's attached to the deed at the register of deeds.
And stays with for.
But they do have opportunity to appeal. Is that through the district court or what they cover that?
Yeah, that's true, the district court, it's civil. But it used to be if, you know, you go out there in the works, you know, they can call you back out. The commission is a whole or the two members were there to see if the work has been completed. And then if it hasn't been, you know, or they present a bill, because a lot of people don't realize that, you know, it used to be the left, right, which is kind of the norm. I think Ron would probably agree with that. Now, that's not the statute. But if you want to be left, right, it has to be in the deed. Because, you know, like we've got a fence out there that there's a branch comes down to part of it. Well, if you're looking at it on our side, it's that guy's responsibility. That's a lot more work to do it. But getting back to the question that, as it goes on the deed, but then that stays in the deed forever. And then it's also, and I didn't want to ask the gentleman about it, because there was people staying in line, that if we would have set up, if we'd had to set a fence, you know, minimum fence requirement, right now the state says they'll only ask for a three-wire fence. There's a page and a half of it. But if we'd have made a ruling that, you know, it had to be a five-wire fence or like that. Or four, that would be countywide.
Oh.
And I'm not sure if that's what it was. So that's, it was really about an hour and 40 minutes. And that lady that was running computers said there was probably 150 to 200 questions online that they were gonna ask. Good presentation, that's all. Oh, we'll be going with Janelle to Minneapolis today for the Legacy Committee, the North Central Regional Planning Commission.
And, and you know, typically back on that fence viewing, if it happens to get to that where people have adjoining properties, share a fence line and so on, and there's dispute. The first course of action we always encourage, and usually this just works out. You know, as property owners and neighbors, they just need to get together and, and figure it out. And they can settle it and they can look at what some of the methods of the law dictate. And so sometimes it's a little bit of a last resort. So it doesn't happen very often that we have had a fence viewing. And a few times we've had that, I think the property owner still went back and revisited the issue and were able to get along and have it all figured out. Earlier this morning, we had John, and it's pronounced Sheehan.
Sheehan.
And he's the new executive director of North Central Regional Planning Commission. And he's going around and meeting the various people of North Central Kansas and commissions and told us a little bit of some of the opportunities and talked about their willingness to help us whenever we have a particular time of need. And they have opportunities that they can make available through grants and facilitate. We also had the county treasurer in here, Leah Hearn. And then also Jeannie visited with us about some of the election equipment that we're looking at. And then also this evening, we're having a meeting at the Legacy, or often known as Brookville Hotel. And the county is pretty much the host of that. But what we've done is invited city commissioners, administrators from all the cities in Dixon County. So there'll be about 30 of us up there just to kind of informative, but also kind of discuss what some of the issues and challenges happen to exist here from a city standpoint and county standpoint. So it should be a good discussion. That's all I have. So we'll go ahead and move on. We do not have any petitions or proclamations. This would be the time for public comments. If someone wanted to have a comment on any item that is not on the agenda. And after we finish that portion of public comments, we do have scheduled our two budget hearings. And so if your comment is in regards to the budget hearing or budget matters, you could save it for the, the actual hearing. But is there anyone that has a public comment or question on any item that is not on the agenda? So it appears we do not have any public comments. And so we will go ahead and move on. The first item that we have is the revenue neutral rate budget hearing. And before we open the hearing, I'll go ahead and have our finance director, Janelle, if you'd go ahead and just give us some preliminary remarks on the budget hearing in regards to the revenue neutral rate.
So two years ago, legislatures passed the revenue neutral rate, which basically is the taxing jurisdiction plans to use the exact, or budgets the exact same amount of property tax revenue dollars for this upcoming budget year, you know, as they did for the previous year. So even if our assessed valuation goes up, the revenue neutral rate wants us to use the current, or the this year's taxing or mill levy. So, and part of the law also requires that we hold a revenue neutral rate hearing to hear from taxpayers as well as going along with this. And then once that has completed, then we would hold the budget hearing as normal, so.
Okay, is there any question or comment for Janelle before we get to the revenue neutral rate hearing? And that will involve a resolution to adopt the revenue neutral rate. Okay, thank you, Janelle. At this time, the hearing regarding the resolution on the revenue neutral rate is now open. And so if there's anyone from the audience or online that would want to make comments as far as that hearing, this would be our opportunity to do so. The thing is, you would go ahead and give your name and address. And as I mentioned before, following this budget hearing for the revenue neutral rate, we will have our budget hearing. So there's, there's kind of two hearings that are going to take place here this morning. As Janelle mentioned, this is statutorily required to provide the notice and hearing prior to exceeding the revenue neutral rate. And so that's something where there is just the advisement on that. For the tax year of 2023, the calculation was 54.836 mils. This is provided by the county clerk. And
We're proposing 54.837.
Okay, so since we're exceeding that revenue neutral rate of 54.836 mils and what we're proposing, the next part would be 54.837 mils.
And the reason that we're doing that is if these are just estimates and when the actual assessed valuation is completed in November, if the assessed valuation is higher than what we estimated, then we would be able to receive those tax dollars. Even if we did not hold the hearing, if we decided not to exceed the rate, then we would not be able to receive those tax dollars.
But that, that is a target area that covers that particular happenstance. Is there anyone else or is there anyone that would have any additional comment or question in regards to this portion? So at this time, I'll close the hearing. So that hearing has been closed. To proceed, is there any question or comment from the commission? To be able to have the revenue neutral rate levied, this is on tax year of 2023, we would need to adopt resolution 08252022.
I'll move. I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second to adopt resolution number 08252022. This is in regards to the revenue neutral rate. Any other discussion or question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. A lot of papers here, so I'll give this to Jeannie now.
Should be another form that you would need to sign for the, on the vote.
Okay.
This is, once you pass the. This is what the object.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
It's a little me old in terms of the budget.
Okay, once again, we're going to do the same format as we just had gone through. And we're going to have a budget hearing for our budgets. And Janelle, if you'd want to give some preliminary remarks. And then after we've done that, I will go ahead and open up the budget hearing.
So we do have a short presentation that I'll briefly go over. Stop me if I'm talking too much.
Just want to make sure everybody can hear too, because you're facing us, but they're behind you, so.
Okay, so what's the purpose of the county budget? It's our financial roadmap for the upcoming year. And for the fiscal year 2023, our budget is $27,128,833. But we are reducing the mill levy by two mils, by 2.134 mils. And it's a difference of 1,349 from 2022 budget to 2023 budget. So just a little history on counties. Counties are one of the first of our original forms of government. And it dates back to the 1600s, when the first county in Virginia was formed. So today's counties are structured and chartered under state constitutions or laws. And in Kansas, that starts with KSA 19101. We have a lot of responsibilities that are included in that. So federal, state, local elections, appraisal of property, administration of the property tax system. We also have collections and distributions of taxes for all the 91 taxing units in the county. Registration and licensing of motor vehicles and driver's license. District courts, recording of lands, along with the construction and maintenance of highway road and bridges, highway roads, bridges and culverts. County Health Department with the county commission as board of health. The eradication of noxious weeds, mental health, drug and alcohol programs, emergency medical services, 911 service, solid waste disposal, waste management plans, jail, law enforcement, prosecution of criminal and civil cases, disaster management. So there's a lot of responsibilities that we're taxed with. Where does our revenue come from? Our primary source of revenue for, to pay for those services is ad valorem taxes. And like I said, the 2023 ad valorem is up slightly from 2022 by $1,349. Other revenue includes sales tax, fees, ambulance fees, interest, grants. The three-legged stool that we all were familiar with from the, the states that was in place is pretty lopsided now, unfortunately. And, and the reduction or removal of the LABTR has, has taken place. We also have unfunded mandates, including this revenue neutral rates that we have to take care of. It also includes jobs that the county performs, such as motor vehicle and driver's licenses, where the state receives the lion's share of those fees. The county gets a small portion of it, but we're completing all the work for them. If we take a look at our expenditures for this year, even with our revenue staying the same, we're still seeing increased expenditures. So 44, we're budgeting a 44% increase in some of the departments for health insurance. And that depends on the turnover that we've had and the pay, the health insurance plan that they take. We saw an increase of 9% for mental health. Part of that is because we hope to keep, to provide assistance to those citizens that need it and keep them out of our jails because that is a higher cost. 3% increase for inmate meals and medical costs. And I hope that we're on target with that, but we all see what the food costs are increasing in the grocery stores. 17% for utilities, 15% for fuel, 27% for medical supplies, of which 10% of that is oxygen and IV. 12% on road oil. We saw increases in our highway department, a dollar a ton for road sand for dust control, $2.15 for road stone, a dollar per ton for salt for our roads for safety. We're also putting in an average of a 5% salary. So we can attract, like we talked earlier this morning, attract employees and retain employees. Now, I realize that some people believe that we should follow the consumer price index, but the county does not use what the average citizen does. The municipal price index would be a good indicator, but that's still not exactly what, what we do. So despite our 2% or our two-mil decrease, we're projecting, I'm projecting that next year we are going to have to look at any increase to cover these rising costs. If we move to the next slide, this, this just shows how property taxes are calculated. And this is set in the statute, but market value is what sets the, or supports the budget. So the appraiser does not set value, market sets the value. And markets have changed. Markets have changed significantly even from 10, 15 and 20 years ago. And a couple of examples that I went back to find, in 2002, our population in Dickinson County was 19,722 citizens. Today it's 18,459. So we've lost 1,263 citizens in those years. In 2002, gas unleaded was a dollar 33 per gallon and diesel, a dollar 31 per gallon. So now average $3 for unleaded. And we're using 32,000 to date. We've used 32,000. So that 96,000 that we have spent on unleaded fuel in 2002 would have been 42,000. Diesel, we're using as of today, 47,649 gallons. Our costs were 142,947. Back in 2002, that'd be $62,658. Our road rock was $6 a ton. Now we're at $26 a ton. If we needed to purchase a police vehicle, 25,000 equipped, now it's $47,000. Our health insurance in 2005 was $542.13 compared to $13.17. Minimum wage, the state minimum wage was $2.65 an hour. I think the county was probably around $7 an hour. Now we're trying to get to $15 an hour to attract and stay competitive, but that has been blown out of the water. We've, we've heard that for the past few months. The biggest thing I think that we need to keep in mind is technology has changed. Cybersecurity threats are predominantly going around. We hear them a regular occurrence. So in 2002, there was no open access to the internet at the county. And we operated off an I-series terminals. No emails for most of the staff. We had no smartphones. It was all backed up to a tape drive. And then we took it to the bank and stored those tapes in safety deposit box. Now everything is web-based. We're trying to push technology out for our citizens and make the services that we provide, provide a little bit easier for them to access and do, so. Next page just gives you a breakdown of where our county taxes, and this is just a county tax on a $175,000 home. What do we receive for that? $91.97 a month. Well, 24 hours, seven day a week, 365 a year, 911. And that handles emergency and non-emergency calls for five law enforcement agencies, seven EMS and first responders, and 12 full-time or volunteer fire departments. 24/7, 365 law enforcement. And they cover the county plus two cities in Solomon and Enterprise, as well as manage a 64-bed jail facility. 24/7, 365 advanced life support for medical services. Also safe roads and bridges, snow removal, mowing of county roads, installation of traffic and location signs. We have a civil and criminal court system and then prosecution of those. Election staff and equipment, the DMV station for renewal of tags and licenses. We also have the solid waste and household hazard waste disposal, the health department spraying noxious weeds. Again, there's a laundry list of things that the county provides. If you look at our staffing structure, 145 employees. We are not changing the staffing structure from 22 to 23. But as we talked about in the work session, we are facing some challenges with salaries. We're seeing huge pay increases, sign-on bonuses, retention bonuses. You know, the good thing about the county, we offer a bi-weekly pay plan, 11 paid holidays, vacation leave, sick leave, personal leave, bereavement leave, health insurance, which we pay 95% of an individual plan. It also includes dental, vision, retirement, group term life, employee assistance program, training, uniforms, a deferred investment option for retirement. Right now though, we've got three open positions in highway road and bridge, two in EMS, two in the appraisers, one in the sheriff, one in the county attorney and one in dispatch. And these are all priority positions that we need to fill. And like we talked earlier, the thing that we're seeing is the benefits are not a factor for people looking for jobs. It's the pay. We're losing staff to surrounding counties, surrounding local entities, to private businesses as well, so. So where are dollars spent? Well, 31% of them out of this budget will go to public safety. 37 for special funds, that's road and bridge, bond and interest, capital outlay. 15% for administration, that's the commissioners, county counselor, custodial, GIS. 9% is public service, that's our department of aging, foreigner, noxious weed. Taxation election is the county clerk, treasurer, register of deeds, appraisers and zoning. And then the appropriations, the outside organizations that we fund, the conservation district, Flint Hills Task Force on Aging, Central Kansas Free Fair, Tri-County Fair, Historical Society, Central Kansas Mental Health, OCCK and DKEDC. The next few slides that we have are just showing some of the accomplishments that our staff did in 2021. 24 miles of asphalt overlay at 68,000, almost 69,000 a mile, or 1.6 billion. And then we also had 62 miles of paint striping, you know, for, that's for safety. We replaced the bridge at 1510 Rain Road at a cost of almost 713,000. We also replaced it 1467 Utah Road, which is part of the Fish Passage Program. The estimated cost was 52,000. And we did receive money from the feds, but our end kind was still 36,000 of that, so. Ditch cleaning that we do. Noxious weed, environmental services. 8,395 acres of bindweed were treated, along with 20,000 acres of musk thistle. We had 10,347, 47 tons of e-waste, 3,000 gallons of used oil, 13 tons of e-waste that was removed, brought into our transfer station. We go to the next picture. We see the district court and we see the renovated courtroom. We see Judge Googler swearing in and our staff. But district court filed 3,390 cases. They received 26,000 in restitution, conducted three jury trials, and they e-filed over 11,000 documents last year. Our sheriff in jail, we see the promotions that, for staff, which is great. We had 629 citations issued. They served over almost 5,800 civil process papers, 16 drug-related arrests, and then 1,400 inmates were housed in our local facility. EMS, we talked about the number of calls increasing. They had 2,481 calls that they responded to and transported 1,600, over 1,600 patients. And our health department, they administered almost 4,900 vaccines. They provided 326 foot care services throughout the county and then worked over 2,000 COVID cases. I told you not to let me talk too long, guys. So the county clerk's office, we've got 13,569 registered voters. And the top picture is, is the picture that we took recognizing Jeannie's brand-new staff for the election that occurred. They assisted and prepared 57 homestead tax returns. And then the treasurer's office in their new setting, 91 taxing entities. They processed over 31,000 motor vehicles and 3,000 driver's license. Next, we'll look at the appraiser's office. Now, by statute, they're required to visit one-seventh of the county annually. And we have over 14,000 parcels that they're going to look at as they go through that cycle. In planning and zoning, Tim issued 79 building permits last year. 16 of those were single-family, two duplexes, and they have 61 accessory structures. And it looks like our numbers are going down slightly on the building permits. So I figure we'll be about the same. GIS maintains over 100 layers of information. And our county website is searched over 1,600 times a day. And if you remember, we are looking as part of our contract to update the website. So we'll have some new information going in there. Emergency management, we have 110 cert community emergency response team volunteers in the county. And they've assisted with disaster response, the COVID clinics, fair and other events, 911 communications. They received over 48,000 calls, of which 53% or 25,000, almost 26,000 calls for police, fire or EMS throughout the county. Our county attorney, this is a picture of our new county attorney, Sarah, being sworn in. And their staff, we had 256 criminal cases, 38 child in need, child in need of care cases. And our register of deeds is responsible for reporting all of the property transactions. And they filed over 4,100 deeds. This last picture, I swear I'm done, is just a couple of different pictures taken out through the year. Our open house that we had, our staff service awards, and then our picture that we Our open house that we had, our staff service awards, and then our picture that we just took for Rocking Against Cancer. So when we were purple and pink, so. Do you have any questions for me?
Good job, good job.
Good.
Thank you.
That's why I talked so long, so you wouldn't have any question.
Well, you still forget questions. Don't relax too much.
Oh.
Okay. We've, we've heard the overview. And so the next item we have is that we will open the budget hearing, and this will be for public comments. Anyone that would like to make a comment, they have several of you, so you know, allow time for everyone. And we certainly will, or there may be someone online. So anyway, at this time, I will go ahead and open the budget hearing. As I mentioned, if you have any questions or comments, this would be opportunity to do so. And just go ahead and step to the podium and give your name and address and what your concerns are.
Diane Miller, sixteen oh one Jayhawk family. I have a few questions regarding the budget. The pipeline funds that we received as a county. A comment was made that we received more than anticipated, so that made a difference in how much property tax was levied. Where are those accounted for?
They're in the general fund.
So is that a property tax payment?
It's a state assessed, assessed payment because it's a utility. And then it would be distributed over the taxing funds.
And the, the legislature had given the pipeline that had gone through Kansas, and it just happens to go through Dickinson County. So if you're further east or west, those counties would not benefit from it. But all the way from the Nebraska to the Oklahoma border, fixed county was one of the counties. And they did not have to pay any tax or, or pay the counties for having the pipeline or material go through it. And so that ten years expired. And so now for the first time, the county has received those funds, and it'll be in two payments. And, and having said that, there, there's no hundred percent guarantee we will get that year after year. But they've invested a lot into the pipeline, so you know, we certainly don't anticipate they would abandon it. And then plus the product they have is very necessary, so.
So can you tell me what the payment was that we received?
Six hundred?
It was over six, almost seven hundred. I don't have that in front of me, but it was over seven hundred.
Or over six hundred and seventy about is what I recall.
Okay. And that was the first payment, so the second, you, you said you received it in two payments?
The, the second payment has that not come in yet, I don't believe.
No, we've received all of our payments and it was gonna be, yes, and it's just six seventy.
Okay, and that's an annual payment?
Don't know it'll be annual for that amount. It's, it's, they're self-reporting on the amount of product goes through the line. Am I correct on that? So it's a public utility, so we can't, you know, if they, more product goes through, there'll be more taxing money coming to us.
But come next late spring or early summer, we should receive an additional payment. And even going into this last year anticipating that, you know, until we had the burden in hand, we didn't really count it.
So is it in the two thousand and twenty-three revenue estimate?
Yes.
Yes.
And then that also, a few cemeteries, having the pipeline go through it.
School districts.
Districts. And hospital districts.
Okay. So what line item of, I don't see a line item for income or revenue. Is, is that on this page in what?
No, that's the expenses. There's just the chart with the revenue, and it would be under added war taxes.
So it is in the property taxes?
Yes. It's under added war taxes.
Okay. The, the total expenditures for two thousand and twenty-three is roughly two and a half million dollars higher than two thousand and twenty-two. Can you tell us where that, what that is accounting for?
So if you look, highway special revenue is budgeted at two million dollars, whereas this last year it was one point one. We also budgeted additional almost two hundred thousand in highway special revenue. And that's where the bulk of that comes from because of the money that we're setting aside for roads and bridges, primary bridges. They're coming up.
And you're estimating the highway sales tax to increase by nine hundred thousand dollars from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three?
No. No, we've been setting money aside, so this gives us the budget authority to spend those dollars.
Well, that's expenses.
The fifteen seventy, fifteen seventy-one bridge is paid for out of the, the sales tax money. And the road, the striping is paid out of the sales tax money, public safety.
Okay. They do a good job on the roads like they do, right? Impressed with their work ethic. And the criminal court system, that, is that reimbursed by the state back to the county?
But what do you mean?
Does the county bear all the expenses of the criminal court system?
Except for salaries, yes. All the operations are funded through us. And that is set in the statute, I don't remember which one now, but yeah.
So on the, on the salary increases, you gave an additional increase in two thousand and twenty-two, in July?
Mid-year.
Two percent across the board that was supposed to come out of the two thousand and twenty-three?
No, come out of this year.
The two thousand and twenty-three budget?
I'll, I'll let him answer that. I mean.
Well, and, and just kind of for clarity's sake. So we had projected, for example, that there could be a four to seven percent increase as far as, as salaries, based on evaluations and so on come January. But what we did because of some of the things that were happening, happening economically in the local economies and cost of living, we gave an additional, we gave two percent in July. But in essence, what we would be doing is that four to seven percent range, that would be deducted then. So instead of, for example, giving the seven percent, we've already given them the two percent. So basically, they, they had the benefit of receiving a two percent increase for the last six months.
So then you would only budget two to five percent for two thousand and twenty-three, being you were already given, given two?
That, that was, that was the intent. And of course, as we do that, that would still be something that would come up in January. That as a commission, we would have to vote for to, to implement, to implement that amount.
But you didn't budget for the lower percentage.
Well, because the two percent is already in there. We've already given them the two percent. Hey, I, I mean, I hope I'm explaining it, or if Brad or Janelle or Ron or Craig.
If I'm screwed up, you know, you can correct me if I'm wrong here. We gave two percent in the middle of the year, and we reduced that off of the intended increases that we're gonna give for next year.
But if you, but didn't budget a reduced percentage, then you have spending authority to do the full raise again this year.
Well, we have the full authority, but our intent is not to give, you know, like a nine percent raise. We, that's what it would be, we're gonna give a, like I said, it will come up. We have to have the authority there to do it, but I, the intent of, I can't speak to the two, is to see where we're at and the money we got available for raises to try to retain our staff.
Have you thought about a COLA bonus rather than baking it into the salary schedule?
Yes, we have. Just at one time, your bonus. Yeah, thought about it.
Because what you did in July.
It's over forever.
Carries it over forever. So I, I was, I subscribed to a governing finance newsletter. And there was recently an article about the ability of public employees to finance inflationary, employers to finance inflationary salary costs. And as long as revenues keep escalating with inflation, for instance, your sales tax collections are up. And the economy grows, there's no fiscal dilemma, but if a recession hits, and there's thought out there that we are already seeing this. And we see reductions in tax revenues at state and local levels. The end result of hefty COLA payouts is that budgets cannot afford them and layoffs and service reductions will be inevitable. And that's when they suggested that the one-time COLA bonus payment was a better option if you're trying to redo, reduce the impact of inflationary costs. And there's also the need as a commission to balance community public service needs against the tax burden required to finance. One, one more question there, there's a semi in the budget for next year?
Awesome.
Like road and bridge.
At, at what, what level of funding?
It'd be out of our machine fund, but I'm not sure, we're probably looking at.
Highway machinery, yeah.
Probably like a two hundred thousand dollars for, I can't remember what it, we have the overall machine and fund. It's, you know, you'll have to tell me what the fund number is.
It's, it's fund twenty fifteen, it's our special highway machinery that, that's where we purchase equipment out of for the highway department.
And what are they using now?
Semi.
A semi.
I've got three of them.
Okay.
It holds all the different equipment in the water.
Our belly dumps, our belly dumps.
Hose, track hose, and there's every, I mean, it does multiple things.
This is a minor item, but I also wondered, I renewed my tax the other day. And is there a new motor vehicle property tax or a county service fee added to those?
We haven't added a county tax.
It had a four-dollar modernization fee and a service fee of five dollars on each tag.
Probably the state probably.
I'm sure the state is the one that did that, they're the ones that direct.
Figure what's there.
Okay, so that's.
We don't have the authority to add anything to it without state permission, we haven't.
And we don't keep those fees. They all go back to the state.
It says county service fee.
Well, we don't, we don't get the money back for doing it. Am I correct there? I mean, I'm not trying to speak out of turn.
We get so much per tag, but I don't know what it is.
I think what they did is instead of lumping them all together, they broke it out. So it shows up on their statements or your receipt when you, when you register.
We could ask Lea though and see if.
Out of my slash. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there others that would have comments or questions? I appreciate your insights, Diane. You know, one of the things we run into and things have changed so much. But i-if you stop to think, you know, six months from now, or a year from now, what will be the price of, of fuel? Whether it's diesel, whether it's gas. You know, I spoke to someone the other day that on their farm operation, the largest bill they've ever had for diesel occurred this past month. And you know, that's certainly a concern because they're, we're so dependent on agriculture. Not only for our economy, but you know, to feed the world. You look at some of the other expenses as far as, as a vehicle for whether, whatever department it would come out of. You know, we had one this past year where it was a deer accident. One of the law enforcement people responding to a call, and it totaled the vehicle. Well, you know, what will be the cost of a vehicle six months from now? You know, personally, I looked at a used truck about a year ago, and I thought the price was so high that surely, surely it will come down in price, I'll just wait, wait it out. And you know, it's moved the other direction. And you know, all of us face some of that dilemma. You know, I know FRG is looking at some of their utility adjustments on price. All the citizens that impacts, but also in this building or any facility you have, whether, whether it's a city or county facility, your home or your business. And so, you know, some of these items, we try to project with the hopes that, that we would not have to have that type of expenditure, that the expense maybe wouldn't be that great. But the other side of that is anytime you, you talk to someone where there's a shortfall, you know, the discussion is why didn't you plan for the unexpected? Or why didn't you anticipate and try to set aside in a methodical way? And you know, one thing that's really has impressed me with the county level, because I was on the city side years ago, and I think of some of the streets that never got repaired or maintained maybe to the level they should have. You know, it should have been done every year. Well, on bridges, you know, we kind of anticipate what the turnover of the bridges, and we just know that perhaps four or six or seven are going to have to have some sort of maintenance or replacement type issue. And so, you know, a lot of these, we kind of factor in with the idea that, that we will not have to reach that spending authority, but, but at least we have it set aside so we can operate and provide services and, you know, especially when you think of EMS and law enforcement. I mean, they're kind of twenty-four, seven, and when you need them, you need them right then. And you know, there are some things that, I know when Janelle mentioned, you know, we have so many vacation days and things like that. There, there's times that we can, or on a weekend, you know, the, the county building's closed, you might say, and, and, and special things. So there's, you know, sometimes you can kind of schedule and defer. And then there's some things that are very immediate that we have to respond to right then, so. Are there any other comments or questions? Janelle, any additional remarks? You've, you didn't go that long.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
But I, I appreciate the overview that she did provide because it really does tell you, I mean, there's just a lot going on in the county. There's no other comments, and I don't think we have any online. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on the budget. We've had the budget presented. Are there comments or questions from the commission? No questions. On this, we will need to, by motion, to adopt the budget as presented in a second.
I move we adopt the two thousand and twenty-three budget as presented.
I'll second it. We have the motion and the second to adopt the two thousand and twenty-three budget as presented. Any other comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, person carries. Thank you for coming for this, and we still have other items on the agenda and reports. And yes, I'm going to do the signatures.
I missed it too.
The next, the next item that we have is reports of county officers. And our first report will be from our county administrator, Brad Holman.
They'll get into the exciting stuff, boy. Talking about trucks, we do have a ironically dump truck in the capital plan for Martin to replace next year. This is next year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, already this year's about over. And checking into that, we're not sure we'll be able to get one, even though it's in the plan, because right now they're not taking, they won't even take any orders because they don't think they can get them. And so it's, it's kind of up in the air, all the counties are. And so it's it's kind of up in the air, all the counties and municipalities that are looking at placing those orders. And like ambulances, it takes 12, 18 months to get one in anymore. We're not even sure they're going to have them available for the manufacturer, so. That's kind of hanging out there limbo. And you know, we've we we always look at used vehicles. As you know, we've part of the last couple semis, well, the last. Three semi tractors we purchased have all been used units that we've gotten. Very good pricing on and they've served as well, they don't serve as long, of course, but. Dump trucks, by the time we we purchase those and turn around and have them modified with snowplows and the. All the sand and salt distributor equipment, everything on them. You hate to put that kind of money into a used truck, so that's why we try to stick with new ones, so. We're still using Mack trucks, we purchased 12, 14 years ago. And they're serving us, although we're putting more and more maintenance into them, but. We'll continue to get by as long as we can until such time that trucks might become available again, so. Questions come up a couple of times over the years, maybe over the decades and more more so recently. As to the possibility of, and I think Ron brought it up most recently. The possibility of working with Saline County to. Extend the paved portion of Magnolia Road into our county, which switches to 1400 Avenue. Connecting 1400 Avenue with Magnolia Road and making a paved portion all the way through to Salina. After Ron had brought that up a few weeks ago, I think it was from a constituent. I had bounced that off to my counterpart in Saline County. We had talked to a couple of his commissioners and they were very interested in doing something as well, if things could be could be done. In light of the B I L money that potentially will be available for local infrastructure from the federal government, so. The first step in doing something along that line is we would need to have some engineering studies done. To determine basically what. It would take to do that. And to put together the basic road plan, if you will, to have a project like that. Goes through the the process. So Martin and I, when when their engineer gets back and. From vacation and their county administrator is back in a couple of weeks. We'll plan to go over or they'll come over here and we'll meet with them. Start putting some numbers together on what that would take. To our goal would be to have that project at least engineered to the bare necessity that it can be. Shovel ready, if you will, when the money becomes available from the federal government here in the next year or two. And we could make application for that grant. It's probably with the B I L money is probably going to be the only time. I don't know what the future will bring, but it's certainly been the only time in in our history. That we would have money available to do that where it would be affordable. Because as you as you remember, we're told the B I L money is not only paying for the project for the most part 90%. But they'll also in that 90% include the engineering. And the inspection fees and everything that are typically on the local jurisdiction. So it would be very. I guess affordable for us to do that at this point. With the three miles we have and where Saline County would have their portion as well to do and whatever that cost would be. So bottom line is that's kind of in the works, probably closer at this point than we've ever been. You know, a decade ago, we we approached Saline County and we were told no. Won't happen and. And now with different commission, different set of outlooks and different funding mechanism, it's potential, so.
Well, the county commissioners there seemed interested when I visited with them and and the other part where it's pro rated. The Pohita area west in Saline County is actually to the west of that is a flood area. And so some of their engineering costs would be significantly higher. And. And and placing the roadway there, but that would take care of that flooding issue perhaps for them, but. But but that'd be a part we wouldn't have to be. Taken care of because it's in Saline County, so. There might be some. Might be more economical for us on the Dixon County side than they would would experience.
All right. So anyhow, we'll have more information coming in the future on that.
Are we going to still proceed with it even if they don't get the funding?
You're looking at me.
I know, well, I'm just, I'm looking, I'm looking at you, I have to, at you commissioners.
I have I have no idea what we're looking at in cost.
But I mean, but I mean. You know, we may qualify, but if they don't.
It would be a joint project.
Okay, I mean, that's what you're.
Yeah, that that's one of the requirements of the B I L money or priorities. That they put, they've got a number as as our engineer calls a checkbox.
In other words, it'd all be one.
It would be one application that we would enjoy. Yeah, and and that's one of the boxes that gives moves it up into points categories if you can work jointly with another jurisdiction.
Okay.
Yeah. And so this is one that kind of like the Northwest 14th Street corridor. Would be working with the city of Abilene, it's a joint jurisdiction project, so. That that gives it more points and more horsepower. I have no idea what it's going to do, I don't know, I I wouldn't even have a clue to tell you what that would cost. But once that's the reason for the engineering study. I can tell you it's going to be expensive, so.
Well, basically, we don't have to require any right away. I would think.
Right.
Molekolder should be big enough to put a 22 foot. Right away.
For the reserve. Should have it on, it's pretty wide through there already. We've got a couple of bridges that we've replaced here in the last 10 years. If you remember, I I think you guys went office when we did the lightweight concrete bridge.
When Moni did.
Yeah, yeah. The experimental bridge that Moni did for us. Is right there on the county line, so. Already in place, we'd tie into that, so.
And we. We really kind of were the beneficiary of. We didn't have to pay. Per se for that.
Right, I mean, because it was an experimental. Bridge under that program, it it got us more points and and more money, so.
It still had all the weight loads and everything, but it was just the way the aggregate was used on it. It it was state approved.
Right.
But the key word there was experimental.
And they get them out every year and inspect that, look at it.
I know what I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Then, I mean, it was. It wasn't the regular design build, it was experimental stuff, so.
Oh, the innovative bridge program.
The density of the bridge, concrete wasn't quite the same, but it still had all the rebar and all the filings and.
Right, and the same rating, so.
Yeah.
And so far, it's looking very well, it's holding up very well, so.
For that 50 years.
Yeah, no kidding, I won't be around until my. I'm.
10.
Forty years.
Happy to say that our elevator people showed up Monday morning and a renovation's underway. Finally, two years later, so. It is closed down and we've made arrangements so far, everything's working, but. That's the last task on our four dots renovation project to get done, so. Hopefully that will go well. I'm working on the final contract version with Hams. For the transfer station. Moving forward, starting in 2023. There will be an increase in that, of course, we talked about that before on the tonnage. So we want to get that done as soon as possible and I, they sent me the final draft with some. Amendments that we had corrected, we'd sent it to K Camp and sent it to Doug and. We've all looked at it and and K Camp had some suggestions that they wanted to have. Forces taken out and Hams did do that. So I sent it back to Doug for a final review today and. So hopefully in a couple of weeks when we bring that back to you to have that executed. Then we need to plan on, we want to do that now so that we can let our haulers know that what the fees are going to be for 2023. And they can they can act accordingly. We'd also talked about looking at increasing. That early, so we had a little bit of buffer money in there to pay for some of those expenses, so. But that'll be coming back before you in the near future. The last thing I have is we received a letter. This week from the Robert Rudin family in South of Solomon. Praising the road and bridge crews. And a portion of that letter says that. When I see you all mowing during the summer. We're hitting the snowplows in the in the dark early hours of morning. I I know that I'm thankful I live in Dickinson County. And that we can. And I calculate the number of lives that are saved and the injuries averted. By your efforts, I know having six members in the family of kids that drive. That they personally benefit from the safety factors of your diligence and maintain our safe routes. I thought that was very nice of them to send that, I just want to make that note, so. That's all I've got.
Yeah, thank you. County councillor Doug Thompson.
Yeah, I'm doing it, Brad, so I'll review that contract on the transfer station, we may have some changes in regards to that. And I'm reviewing some other documents that'll be down the road somewhere, but that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Under notices and communications, we did receive and appreciate the letter that Brad read. Our county news newspaper. We also, in regards to the. Pipeline, we received a magazine from them. Talking about their business and then Ingram's, which is a Kansas City magazine. Sends us a complimentary. Subscription on that, and so we've received that magazine. I did have someone mention to me the other day. And I know. I don't know if we've had any recent conversations, but they were talking about the wind turbines in Marion County and so on. For energy and. And said that they had a parcel of land down there or land down there as well as in Dixon County, but they found them. Great to work with and. They put extra gravel on the road, they needed an entryway to their. To one of their pastures and they've. Provided the gate for it and all of that, but I guess the other leading question was. Any further progress or anything as far as the southern part of Dixon County?
There has been, last Thursday evening at the planning commission meeting and all of the wind. Company presented their conditional use permit. In consideration. And the the planning commission approved that along with the other cases they were hearing. And so I think the, was it the 8th of September, I believe? Is when it's scheduled to come before you for consideration. There was an issue on the publication in the newspaper and I don't know, Doug, can you talk to you about that? Okay, he's going to about to whether or not. The publication was sufficient to. To move forward or whether we need to do things all over again and there with the newspaper, so. But I I don't know what that outcome will be, but yeah, there has been some progress or still looking to start up construction 2023, so.
And I know when much of that work was being done in Marion County, plus they've been in many counties and across the nation. You know, in some ways they have a little bit of an advantage because because they know their side of the business and they repeat it, repeat it, repeat it. But based on some of the things that have happened. We've gained some experience and insights of. Of what would take place to prepare, to make sure that the roads are maintained and if there's. Extra equipment or heavy equipment and so on that. Our property owners and and people that use those roads are going to be protected. As far as the the safety factor to make sure everything's. Held up to a high standard, so. I know Brad has done a lot of research on that. This other one, this is from the Americans, it's a email, Americans for Integrity. And it's citizens that are stepping up to form cost cutting edge election security commission. And so they wanted us to be aware, they've been visiting with, they're in St. Louis County. And they just want to make sure that our election process, that there's. No shortcomings or that it's not vulnerable to. Anything. Anything happening that is going to, you know, challenge our elections. So we have received that. Was there any other communications or notices, any of you received by comment or letter or email? Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on. The next item we have is consider. Resolutions. And we had an housekeeping item added to the agenda. That was to resend a resolution that we adopted here well back 081822B. And what it amounts to is just a duplication. Back when Laverne Myers was on here, that resolution addressing that was taken. Was taken care of, so. We don't need to have it twice on there and so. We need to resend that particular motion 081822.
I'll move.
I'll second it. We have the motion and the second, and that had to do with someone on some property tax that was back in like 1997. And. So it was just a duplication we didn't need to have in place. We have the motion and the second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is the E M T paramedic classification and pay schedule. That's something where we've done kind of a comparative analysis, trying to meet the demands of of keeping our. 911 people fully staffed. And so that's that's been. Brought to us today. Brad, do you have additional comments on that?
I would just highlight that.
You.
Yeah, I like that the the problem we're having is competing with. Other agencies in our area in this region with for paramedics. We've had. Two vacancies for over a year now that we haven't been able to fill. We've got another one of our staff that is most probably going to be leaving. And they're going to other agencies, you know. And the thing about EMS, it's a little about EMS in general, it's a little different than than our other positions we have is. They work 10 hours a month or 10 days a month, so. They work 24 hour shifts. And so they can literally live in. Wichita, Newton, Salina, Manhattan, wherever they want. And migrate to wherever they work, we have. We have staff currently that live in Salina, Manhattan Junction City. Newton, different places that come to work here and have for a long time. We also have a number of people live right here in town or in the county, so. Again, it goes against my grain, it's not the way I was raised and and as a priority, but. Salary has become the most important thing to the younger generation. I've got three kids that illustrate that and it just drives me nuts, but. They don't look at the other things in in life quite yet, someday hopefully they will, but. To be able to attract people to to work here, we have to increase that salary, that's that base salary. And. You know, we're we're, it's it's become of. It's become a a society to where we don't no longer. Can be competitive and and survive within this field, we have to be attractive. And what I mean by that is we have to steal employees from other agencies. That's the sheer. Realist reality of it, so. And that's what they're doing from us, is they're robbing robbing good people from us. A good example of that is Marion County just recently. Up their paramedic starting salary up to $62,000 a year. And that's what Salina, Manhattan, others, Junction City are paying and. And they're working only over $10,000 less than that, well, that's that's a big difference to. The people that apply for those positions, so.
Is Hutchison Community College now, is that about the only close place that they give training and?
That's the most predominant one, I don't know whether it's the only one, but as far as I know, that's. Where most everybody goes, that's where everybody we've had who through the class has gone. And what we have typically done in in the past is if if we have an employee that wants to. Further education and become a paramedic or an E M T. We will scholarship that person. And pay for the $2,000 a year tuition. If they sign a contract with us that they'll stay with us for two years after they graduate as a paramedic. And we've had several do that successfully. And it's worked out well, we've had some that dumped out in the middle of class and had to reimburse us. But what is happening now out of sheer necessity with other agencies. They're sending students to the Hutch class, it's a two year class. And they're not only paying them to go through without a contract. But they're paying them a salary. Because they're paying paying them a regular salary while they're attending class, we've never done that, so. That's not something I'm recommending at this point. But what we've got is a selling point here, besides a good community to live in and a good facility. And good equipment. Is we're only EMS. And our some of our counterparts, for example, Salina. And Junction City require you be a a paramedic and a firefighter.
Across train.
And there's a lot of paramedics that don't like being firefighters, so those are the people we target. And so. I know there's one in Riley County right now that. John tells me that if we can be competitive with salary, that he could probably steal him away. You know, not that Riley County are not our friends, but that's a. That's reality of the of the situation, so. So that's kind of where we're at and. As I told you, the things that bother me at night are. The people sitting in 911 and or at EMS to be able to respond to the call when it comes in. We can deal with somebody complaining about a pothole or the road being rough or something like that. But you know, if somebody is not able to be get their emergency medical care. Because we don't have the staff, that's a problem, problem. because we don't have the staff, that's problems, problem, problems for me. I mean, that that's worrisome for me, so. And and I'm sure it is.
So Kathy, in the article, instead of steal away, just say we have an attractive job opportunity.
Not the best verbage, but.
Coaching would be better.
No, no, no. Okay. So what we're looking at this, um, with the adjusted, and this is based on comparing what others have done. Um, and and, you know, I would think this would make it attractive for someone that wants to be an E M T um, or an advanced E M T. Yeah, I I can think of, and it's kind of a young person's occupation for the men and ladies. I mean, they've got, uh, they can get in some difficult situations, but involve some lifting and just, yeah, I mean, they i- it's challenging. I I don't think everybody's maybe cut out to do something like this, but there's extra training. That this would lay, have the level at a forty-eight thousand, one hundred eighty-nine entry level salary for someone in that position. And, um, on up to sixty-eight thousand, so it's a very competitive, uh, range. And yet it won't be the top as far as other counties, but.
We hope that couple of things we have to offer locally is, you know, we've got a nice community. We've got good schools. We've got good equipment. We've got a lot of things to offer. We just, unfortunately, you know, the things that I look at and the things that we all look at are not necessarily what these younger generation is dictating their, you know, what's important to them, so.
Now, how does someone on the advancement of that, is it the director or is it years of experience that from E M T to advanced E M T and on up to a paramedic and?
Well, it's a certification based on the state, state requirements. So you have.
An ongoing career.
Career path, and you have to meet those requirements and pass the state exam. In some cases, you have to go to, uh, much like a doctor, you have to do your field, uh, field work with another agency in a hospital or E R or something like that. I know that there's a certain amount of time to be a paramedic. You have to do your, your clinicals in in an emergency room somewhere, so.
And there's ongoing education.
Correct.
So the continuing education and how many are, do we have working or?
We have nine.
Staffed, what?
Well, if we were fully staffed, we'd have nine paramedics.
Okay.
And, uh, we have nine paramedics and nine E M Ts, eight E M Ts. Right now, we have six E M Ts and three advanced E M Ts. And the reason we do that is we try to have a paramedic and an E M T on every crew. So that depending on the severity of the call and the requirements, what treatment's required. Like Craig said earlier, is he transports somebody that's got a major injury or a major issue. You're going to have the paramedic in the back with you and the E M T driving typically. Or in some cases, if it's, if it's a local call, you might have a firefighter or first responder that drives that ambulance into the hospital and you have both of our crew in the back providing care, so.
Now, is there always lieutenant paramedic and captain paramedic there at all times or?
Typically, one on the shift.
First shift.
All three crews, because we have three crews on at a time. We have two stations here in Abilene and one station in Marion. But yeah, we try to have at least one.
That's the ratio. Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the commission? I guess we'll need a motion to adopt this classification and pay schedule.
Don't move. I'll second it.
We have the motion. We have the second to adopt the classification and pay schedule. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The third item we have, and this is just kind of fresh after the election, and we've been discussing this, is a voting, a new voting machine. And, uh, Jeannie has done some research on this, and this is something that I know we've had discussions for several years now. Um, we wanted to extend the life and use the current equipment we had as long as we could, uh, but we have been setting money aside. So, um, Jeannie, do you have some additional comments in regards to the voting machine and the report you gave us?
Um, I don't have questions.
And and you're referring to there's a voting machine. I would call it a voting. This is the machine that counts.
Counting machine is actually a counting machine.
The ones are here, the company that makes them is no longer really servicing them, so we need to.
Right.
Replace the machines.
It's becoming obsolete.
They're having trouble getting parts or it's old enough that, yes.
And the machine we have is twenty.
I've been here sixteen years and was here.
Yeah, I think.
Like, are we declaring a surplus and sell it to someone or?
Maybe. You waste.
So the proposal you had here.
For the silver package.
The silver package, what is the difference between what we're getting and what we have now? And are there, other than it's new?
It's more updated that, and it it has the reports that are required, that we are supposed to have. The other machine, it took for a long time to get those reports we could do them. But Barb told me it would take at least thirty minutes for that report because it was a pretty quick. Yes, or this one will, I mean, it'll print it right away. It's not, we had a dot matrix printer before, which is very old. And so it took a lot of time. This one is a newer one. And I talked to five different counties that have this machine, and they were all really happy with it and said, you'll love it. It runs so much faster and quicker than what the six fifty does, which what we have currently now.
This one does seventy-two ballots per minute, if if I understand that correct.
And I remember from the work section, some of the stuff is required by the state.
Right.
So in our old machines, it'd do that.
Right.
So with this machine setup, they'll bring someone out in advance of the election. It would be able to have for the general election.
Right.
And they would bring someone out to test the machine and just procedurally go through things with you and your staff?
They, part of that quote is training, and we'll have a day of training. They'll go through the machine, show us how to run it.
Okay. And then it has a warranty and the silver warranty would be adequate since it's a new machine.
Right.
Shouldn't have any mechanical issues.
Right.
So the total purchase of this, um, amount as written here is one hundred six thousand, eight hundred twenty dollars. And then the warranty licensing and maintenance support fees would be an additional six thousand, seven hundred sixty, and that's the silver package.
Right, and that, you would not need that the first year. We would not have to pay that the first year. We've already paid.
Already worked.
Yes, for the the machine that we have. And that, that warranty is six thousand. It's close to what we're already paying, so it's not, it's just a little bit of difference. We, we currently are paying six thousand, six hundred eighty-one fifty, and that was six thousand.
And this would be, um, I guess, serve our needs for the next decade or?
Yeah, she said it should. And, uh, we actually talked about at least purchase, so we'll be able to pay half of it this year and the other half next year. And, um, that, there's no interest or fee for doing that.
Okay. So this is submitted by Election Systems and Software. Any questions from the commission or a motion to make this purchase?
Don't move. I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second, um, to go ahead and make this purchase on this, what you call it, Brad?
Ballot counting machine.
Ballot counting.
Yeah.
Okay. Voting didn't sound as bad as stealing.
Voting machines. That you have that you actually vote on.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. So this is a ballot counting machine. Any other question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We do not have any unfinished business or other business unless there's something else to bring up. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Just before you make that.
Yes, sir.
I haven't talked to Tim Hamilton about the issue of that, that publication that may have been missed. But I did get an email from him. And, uh, I'm not sure what all of the details are, but I'll meet with, uh, Tim and see what publication was missed. I don't believe he missed it. It may have been a situation, the newspaper didn't get the publication in. But I'll, I'll meet with him and we'll see what it is. And we'll go about fixing whatever we need to do if it's republishing or.
Cut the date or whatever.
Yeah, we'll see what it is. That's the only other thing I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I have one more question about the website?
Uh, yes, yes.
When you, when you went to the new, the new website, and I don't know how many years ago, we lost all historical, um, financial data. And when you, when you go to pull up the county commission agenda, there's no drill down for those reports that you're or or those estimates like per estimate that you can get. You get the printed agenda and that's it. There's one sheet. And on the budget, all you get to pull up is what you printed in the paper. You can't find any details. You can't find any revenue. And I just wonder if there couldn't be better search capabilities for the public because it seems to me like that's, there's a lack of transparency or lack of available information.
And then, for example, on the ballot counting machine, that was something that we just received this morning. So we didn't, we added it to the agenda. But but even, I think your point's well taken. Um, if it's not there in advance, we could still try to have it on there so someone could take a look at it afterwards.
And can you get historical financial data? You used to be able to do that.
We'd have to talk to I T.
That's something that, uh, as we're reviewing with our committee, what we want on our website, that's, it will definitely be brought up.
Okay.
We're in the process of redoing the website again now, so.
Don't make it worse, though.
It would make it a little bit easier to find.
What you had before this one, easier to work.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to adjourn? You already made it and we had the second. Did you get that, Jeannie? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned.